Hearing none, we'll move on to personnel. Item number one, to approve the recommendation to appoint police department personnel. Chief Mike Porter, you have the floor.
Yes ma'am, my recommend for hiring Mr. Orion Skinner. He is here with us today and he is ready to go to work for the police department. He is 26 years old, native of New Iberia right now. And his brother, Noah, works for us.
You and your brother get along? No issues, we're all fighting.
They look almost exactly alike.
Okay. And so he said for now, are you thinking about moving to Abigael?
It's.
We'd love to have you here. I looked through the application, I have no issues. I'm welcoming you to the team, thank you for wanting to be part of the team. You are the public face of our community, so we always ask that you answer calls with respect to the community and professionalism, and I don't think we'll have a problem with you with that. But I just want to state that upfront.
I move, we accept the recommendation of the chief and hire the gentleman.
We have a motion in a second on the table to hire Mr. Skinner to the office of patrolman for Abigael Police Department. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a question for Mr. Skinner. I've seen you went to three different schools, how did that happen? Delta High School, New Iberia High School, and Franklin Senior High School. What were you doing, your family was moving or something?
Yes sir, at 15, my mom got cancer and we bossed back and forth between family members as we.
Well, sorry to hear about your mother, I hope she's alright. Well, I know you give the help for the police department 100%, as long as you're not giving blood. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Mayor stated what I was going to say, personality and attitude positive. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, welcome aboard. Moving on to presentation, item number one, to recognize Mr. Horace Wiltz, who recently retired from the city of Abigael. Horace, are you back there?
Oh.
Yeah, I know you're about to pass away, but I'm not gonna do this.
Congratulations ma'am.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We're just gonna keep.
Okay, it's like this. So, I've been here, I came to the city of Abigael, and I have no regrets. This is the thing, when you work for the city of Abigael, you're working for people, good people. There's nothing short about it. If you listen to your supervisors and leave people behind you, you go a long way in life. And I'm not done. I may be done here with the city, but I will continue on.
Thank you mayor, and the rest of you.
I'm not done with these, oh, you can't leave just yet. Chris, would you join me up here as supervisor?
Especially Mr. Chris.
Come on down Chris.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hold that for me. Today we celebrate Horace Wiltz, who has officially retired from the city of Abigael. Horace was a dedicated member of the parks and recreation team. He started his journey with the city back in 1978, is that right? Yep. Horace devoted over 40 years to helping maintain and set up events across our parks. Forty-four. Forty-four years helping to maintain and set up events across our parks, ensuring enjoyment for all. With Abigael's 12 parks to care for, there's actually 13. Horace stayed busy keeping our community spaces clean, safe, and vibrant. His hard work and dedication have left a lasting legacy that will be appreciated for many years to come. Thank you Horace.
And I'm still not done.
Okay.
If you all need me for anything, any given thing, I'm here. He has my number, she has my number, give me a call. Especially if it's a camera.
That's just, you know.
And I will say, I will say, I'm with the omelet celebration, and one of the first comments they made was, this was the first, the first omelet they ever had that you weren't for. Yeah, and your presence was missed, so I'm gonna do that.
Well, that's a good thing.
So thank you Horace for your incredible service and commitment to making Abigael a better place. Please join us and welcome, and congratulate.
Please. I'm on ladies. I still owe you a lunch, chief.
I'll find.
Alright, we're over here, one, two, three, I got y'all. Thank you. Cohen, you got it too?
I'm sitting.
I got you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you ladies, appreciate it.
I don't think I have 44 years in me, but. Next item on the presentation, swearing in of the youth council. So I'm gonna ask the youth, you can ask Cohen to come in first. Cohen White is the intern, chief mayor, and we've been working together. And this has been a labor of love for Cohen, and Christian's been helping and myself. And so I've asked him to help me with this presentation. So Cohen, would you like to call everyone's name?
Yes, so each youth council member is also gonna get a City of Abigael pin. And we'll start with Ms. Aleah Bessard.
That's Bessard.
You have the box? Don't just turn it off the box after you just pay it.
Oh Mike, you wanna come up here and help me? There you go, thank you. You just want to say hello?
Ms. Elena Henry.
Put it on the top left.
And congratulations.
Mr. Baylor Moat.
Baylor Moat.
Ms. Riley Proctor. Ms. Cecilia Frankes.
Congratulations. Excited? Nervous? I'm nervous every time I gotta stand up here. Congratulations.
Mr. Evan Tuchet.
You really, Francis Tuchet?
No, but I'm at the school at this mall.
Okay.
Mr. Gavin Vargas.
Hi Mr. Gavin, are you nervous? He's excited, he's already such a guy to me.
Mr. James Mendez.
Welcome back. James has been attending city council meetings for longer than any of y'all. That was the drill a little bit.
Yes, yeah, for pleasure.
Stop, hold on, get up and up, my back.
That's a link on there, be a figure.
Okay, Ms. Kylie Denson. Okay. Michaela Luke.
For those of you who are wondering, they are from Abigael High, remaining Catholic, but they're also from other schools too. We did not limit it to only Abigael students.
Right, Ms. Mia Laje. In this.
Please.
This is Aiden Mitchell.
I present to you the first and all your own youth council to the city of Abigael. Thank you all. So let's take a picture and then we'll do that.
Have us standing behind you, in the crowd.
I can get it, we did another one. Bart, you're speaking with. Okay, we got y'all. Alright, now we're gonna do the oath. There we are. Everybody raise your right hand. Repeat after me and I'll go slow. First, I'm gonna say I, you're gonna say I in your name, I. Do solemnly swear. To promote, advocate for, educate. And advise members of the Abigael youth. Responsibility, maturity, competence, and respect. Are key ideals of council members. I will strive to promote those ideals within my community. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you. Alright, y'all, y'all are gonna exit, you're gonna go take care of setting the agenda for your next meeting. Thank y'all for coming.
You will please follow me.
Follow Cohen. Also wanted to say thank you to all the parents for coming and also for allowing your children to be part of the program. Thank you, congratulations, thank y'all.
Thank you auntie.
Thank you.
Well, that was nice. Moving on, minutes and approval of bill. Item number one, to approve the minutes from September 17, 2024, regular city council. Now the motion is second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to ratify bill stay the month of October 2024. Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, item one, number one, discussion with property owner of 814 Jean Adia, pertaining to dilapidated property and to authorize any action if needed. Is the property owner from 814 Jean Adia's present? Chief, would you close the door just for sound, please, thank you. They're welcome to come back in if they need to place the sentence. They do have, I think, did Christian get some pictures? Okay, yeah, she did. You might go for it, that might give you more, she had to walk out with the youth council, so she's usually the one operating. This property, I'm gonna let Brian have the floor because this property has a longstanding history. I look back just in I-Works, which is when we put on I-Works with 2021. The case history goes back as far as that, but I'm sure that the issues of the property are far longer than that. Councilman, Councilman Marty, this is in your district.
Yes ma'am.
So, Brian, you have the floor.
Evening, mayor, council. So this property is under adjudication, and it comes out of redemption period in June of 2025, but with the increase of nuisance violations in that little area of the neighborhood, felt it necessary to go ahead and get the condemnation on, on record at this point. We all know how long it can take to get these dilapidated structures torn down. So I didn't want to prolong the process by another six months by wait until, till June. At this point, it is my, my determination that it is dilapidated and dangerous condition. It probably needs to be demolished at this point.
This is the one, we talked about, anybody who didn't notice the owner?
We did notice the owner, this is the one where there's some things in the, there are some things in the. In the tax assessor's records that we need to clarify, but the courthouse was closed today. So what we decided we were gonna do is leave it on the agenda, have the discussion, let them take the action. We can verify everything with the tax assessor tomorrow when they're open, if we have to redo the process. If, if, we're not sure if their record is wrong, or. Or if the record.
It was conflicting, so it showed that it's still in redemption until June, but it also showed a deed sale that was previously prior to that, so.
The deeds, the tax, the redemption was like in 2020, I think. So I'm not even sure why it could still be in adjudication at that point, it's been four years. But we could not verify with the tax assessor's office today because the courthouse was closed.
And I do have the lien holder that's noticed on the assessor's website has certified, returned signed certified mail.
Would it, Bart, this was where my brain was, let them go ahead and make the recommendation condemn if tomorrow the tax assessor's records. Put it back, rescind the action and have another hearing with the, with noticing the other. But since we believe that this is the accurate notice to the accurate property owner, I think it would be better to not delay it if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, and so here are some other pictures of when the case filed, just Christian on it here. This is an area that, it says the very end of a dead end road, there's a problem with an adjacent property owner with cats. There's lots of the cats in this, in this building. It's been in this state for a very, very long time, so. Alright, I have a motion in a second, any other questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, discussion with the property owner of 511 Southeast pertaining to the dilapidated property and authorize any action if needed. Is the property owner of 511 Southeast present? Okay, can you please come up and state your name for the record?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here with my dad and, and the son. So, yeah, we got this letter in the, in the mail, so we would like to know what's going on.
And your name is?
Ronaldo Cancino.
Renar, Renalgo Cancino.
Yes ma'am.
C-A-N-C-I-N-O.
Yes ma'am.
And your father's name is?
German Cancino.
German Cancino, and that's the property owner per the tax assessor record. Do you own the property, sir?
Yes ma'am.
You do, okay. And you own 511 East, do you also own 515? I mean, we're here for 511, but I just wanna make sure.
Yes, all three properties.
Okay. So this property, Brian, you have the floor. I'm gonna let him go over it and then you will answer any questions which you have, okay?
Yes ma'am, so I was receiving several different phone calls of complaints about rats, rodents, and other vermin that harbor in the, in the residence during the day, come out at night. I went over and took a look at it, and this was the condition in which I found it. As you can see. There's several areas of concern as far as rotten deterioration occurring. It's not one of, not one of the more egregious cases that we have in front of the council, but being that it's got the claims of rats and other vermin that live in there.
So is someone currently living in the property?
We were living there until April, and we moved out, but we always keep all the tools and material there.
So you're using it for storage?
Yes ma'am, kind of. And since we left, they've been breaking in. They tore apart all the doors, the back doors to the place, for both, all three properties. They stole all our tools and materials. And we followed that report to the police, but they haven't done anything. And I also put a camera and I got a USB where I record breaking in. And I've still gotta bring it to the police department, but since then, everything been installed and the police haven't done anything, yeah.
What is your intention with the property?
Oh, we're gonna fix it, and the way it looks right now, we're gonna clean this area. And, but we need the funds to start fixing it, so.
Okay, sir, this is my district, we need a timetable, not sometime in the future. There are neighbors near this property, you are bringing down the value of neighbor's property with this. So it can't remain like this, and we need a timetable to do something positive with the property.
Right, we understand that, we're working on that, on the, start fixing it. But we don't got enough money right now to start fixing. But like, we, like I said, we can start cleaning. We're, we're ready to start cleaning.
Okay, it does not take money to remove the rubbish from the front of the house.
Right.
Do you also own the building to the right of it? If I'm looking at that building, do you own the property to the right also?
No, to the left.
The left, okay, I don't.
Yeah, oh, all right, you live for the contractors?
No, we work for a company.
You work for a company?
Yes.
And the chief of police is sitting right over there, so chief, can you check on the report, whether or not there was a report and where that status is of 511 Southeast Street?
Yes, 511, five.
And so when was, when were the tools stolen?
As, once we left, about, I would say, two weeks, once we, we left.
Around April?
Yes ma'am.
Or May?
Yes ma'am.
That's, you know, that's one of the things we see repeatedly is that people leave houses vacant and then they get broken into and they become problems for the city, they become problems for the neighbors. And, and so we have to hold property owner, owners accountable for the condition of their property. I agree with Councilman Bruce Ward, it cannot sit indefinitely in its current state, and it certainly does not cost money to pick up. Uh, and it certainly does not cost money to pick up rubbish and not leave stacks and stacks of stuff in the front yard. Um, you know, everybody can understand not being able to afford to do a lot of work right away, but we have to see some kind of progress. It's been sitting in this state for quite a long time and it can't continue to sit in that state.
And if you do not want the council to condemn it, you must secure the property. No broken windows, no broken doors. So secure the property.
Right.
And have to see progress in thirty days. So I'm talking about this garbage in front of the property that's not fair to the property owners on either side of you. You do, you don't understand, it's not just you.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And if that property is not lit in and it's dark and it's not lit, it's gonna attract people.
Right. Yes, sir.
So there will come a time when we will condemn it and tear it down if you don't start making progress in trying to fix it.
Bart, you want a motion?
Uh,
What, what are we doing?
Let's see, it's just discussion, so you don't have to take any action right now.
Okay.
You could declare it, blight it, and give them ten days to get a permit to start doing, or, or at least to secure it. Or would you not do that?
Uh, I don't think we declare things blighted. We, uh, though.
Well, that's why I said thirty days. I want it secured and I want the rubbish out of the front of the house. I'm not gonna tell you to go buy a ten dollar gallon of paint yet, but we've got to make progress on it.
Okay.
I'd like to offer one recommendation, so, uh, uh, Christian, can you go to the slide that shows the steps? So the steps are in really bad shape. And I would suggest to the council that we, uh, have them either remove or maybe leave repairs just for the public safety. We've already, he's already
Yeah, I agree.
informed us about the fact that people are going in there without permission. And see somebody get hurt just because we didn't address that.
And the fence around the backyard also, right? Yeah, that's a lot of rubbish.
Yeah, it, the whole property has some fence, uh, around.
I think it is the, on the stage, why don't you just tell them what needs to be done? And get them the time plan to do it. Bring it back to council.
And Brian, that's why I said thirty days. That's certainly lenient enough to do many things. And many of the things we're talking about does not take money.
And then the chief will check on the case about the, um, stolen.
I'll give them a call before you do.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, put a deadline for thirty days in the case file, but I'll also do routine inspections from here on out just to make sure that they're, uh, trying to gain compliance.
If you communicate with Mr. Brian, you see, we just need to see progress.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, so we're not taking any action. Moving on to item number three. We're gonna table, draw the motion, table item three. Second. Motion in a second, table item number three because the owner is all short or he could not present. Uh, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, uh, item table. Item number four, discussion and possible action pertaining to construction and/or renovations being done within the city without permitting. We've got to give it a minute because Brian's still talking.
All right, uh, I'm not gonna, you can hand out so they'll go along with, uh, the images that are on.
All right, Christian, I'm going to the first slide.
All right, so, uh, building codes and inspections, uh, we've been having, uh, I would consider an uptick increase in the amount of properties being identified as uh, under repair or renovation that haven't applied for permits. Uh, as you can see there, the state uniform construction code establishes uniform performance standards providing reasonable safeguards for health, safety, welfare, comfort, and security balance with affordability for the residents of these devices, materials, and techniques. So in nineteen eighty seven, the state, uh, allowed for municipalities to create their own, uh, building codes and standards. Ninety one, they adopted into law. Nineteen ninety seven, they standardized it across the state. And then in two thousand and six, they adopted the international residential code for residential structures. Excellent, please. Why it's important is the health and safety of the occupants. I, I state that because, uh, let's just say that there is some sort of inspectable item that wasn't inspected, improper installation and/or devices were used. Uh, occupants could be, get sick, injured, and, uh, that also could affect the community in certain situations where, uh, bad electrical could start a house fire, which not only would endanger the occupants, but also neighbors in, in that area. Same with, uh, your, your plumbing. So normally what'll happen if you have bad vents or anything like that, you might notice that your plumbing doesn't flush properly or you get sick for no, another reason, uh, the venting is not proper. But it also could lead to other problems that would affect the community by, uh, discharge underneath the house, since we have a lot of raised homes here. So, uh, and then finally, for the safety of purchasers, as you can see that I pulled this from the internet earlier today, only three to four percent of homes are purchased with a warranty. Thirty to thirty-nine percent are purchased as is, meaning that if somebody goes in to buy a home, it looks brand new, redone. Doesn't necessarily mean that an inspection was conducted, that it was up to code, and they could potentially be buying something that's not worth the value and what they're paying for. So, uh, in the last thirty days, we've had eleven properties identified, one of them being this morning. Ten of them have already been notified. Uh, some of them have come in and got their, their permits and are moving forward with the process. Some of them are, uh, have turned in their application with their site plans and, and scopes of work and things of that nature. But as you can see, just in the last thirty days, that, that's the amount of, uh, properties that I've found around the city. Uh, you can't see the whole slide, but, uh, the current penalty, you gotta, yeah, the, the screen's cut off.
I can, I have it.
So the current penalties, uh, the structures will be removed at the owner's expense that's in our ordinance. Uh, that is a very costly endeavor that we'd be subjecting, subjecting people to based off of their failure to, uh, get inspections regardless of whether it was at their fault or just because of their lack of knowledge of the code and inspection process. And then double the fee. Average cost is less than a hundred dollars for the normal structures around here. So I could see where, uh, a property owner, developer, whatever the case may be, may opt not to apply for a permit and get the inspections because basically at the end of it, they'd only be paying a few hundred dollars as opposed to the, maybe a thousand dollars that would be required to actually get the inspections and go through the proper process. Uh, and, uh, just to, uh, give everybody information in the audience, we use a third-party inspection company, so it wouldn't even be somebody from the city that does the inspections. It will go through a licensed, uh, certified inspector, uh, that works with, works in conjunction with the city in, uh, making sure compliance is met and inspections are passed. Uh, all of this being said is to, uh, offer up a proposed addition to the current, current ordinance. And, uh, what I would propose is a suspension of utility services. So basically, during that process, we've, uh, I, I myself gets a call or I'm out doing inspections for, uh, code enforcement, come upon a property. Uh, if they are not compliant and don't gain compliance, basically put a, uh, a stop order on their utilities until they gain compliance. I think that it's a, a more cost-effective way to gain compliance, that they'd be, uh, it, it incentivizes them to actually gain compliance because even if they do finish the project, they won't be able to get their utilities turned on until we get the okay that they've actually met and, and then, uh, achieved all of the standards.
So Councilor Brian's putting this in front of me because it is a problem he's identified. It's an issue that we know is an issue. Um, and we're trying to figure out the best way to resolve it. Um, at the end of the day, whatever we do, this council has to have the backbone to support us in that endeavor to make sure that we are holding, uh, contractors accountable for the work they're doing. Um, Kim Tuchet is in the audience. He is the third-party inspector. Yeah, my question for you is, in other municipalities that you work with, um, you know, how do they handle this situation of against murder?
Well, well, this problem, this problem is not only, uh, unique to Avenueville, it's, it's throughout. Um, a lot of it is additions and, and remodeling, which, uh, there's an, is a, a part of the RSC called, uh, existing, uh, code, which depending on the extent of the work they're doing is, is kinda how much we get involved. Small stuff, re-roofing, changing our windows, stuff like that, we consider maintenance and do not get involved. Uh, the homeowner should be able to maintain his home and justify, take, take, um, take, take care of the maintenance on his home to keep it from getting dilapidated like you've seen in photos above. Um, when it gets to a certain point, we do get involved. Uh, as far as trying to remedy, uh, people not getting permits, uh, several governing bodies have talked about different things, but none of them have ever implemented. Uh, it's a tough, it's a tough answer, but unless you have teeth, it, it's, it's no point in doing it. So, uh, we've been just kinda going on case-by-case basis and trying to make them comply as best as we can.
So go back over what you just said about the roof.
Re-roofing a house
Complete re-roofing.
is considered maintenance.
In actual standard.
We've always done that.
And in the city, do we require, we require?
There is a permit specifically for roofing.
But there is, it's a separate issue. The city in the past, since we've been involved, has always requested a permit from the homeowner. We may not get involved on everyone. What Sarah does is she sends me a brief summary of what's going on and we make a decision as to, this is maintenance, we're not getting involved, and this should have.
Just got the permit, because we may not have to have a third-party inspection depending on the type of work that's happening.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That's, that's one question that I had. Um, one other thing, and I, I know there's someone in the audience that would like to speak it. I'm gonna yield the floor to her.
Uh huh.
But, um, Brian, I wanna know if you have Heritage Village on your list of properties doing construction that are not permitted.
That was the one I found out about this morning.
So that one needs to be addressed immediately. That's a commercial property, um, that has been in the construction. Am I right, Councilwoman? And, uh, they're using, uh, grant money to do the construction and they do not have a building permit. So I, I want that addressed tomorrow.
And in the past, in, in Brian's defense, he's gotten us involved in situations that he thought we should have been involved, and we've worked together. So I know he does a lot of other things that we don't get involved with, but, uh, we do try to work together with Sarah to try to determine if a permit should have been purchased from the city or not.
Whenever you get into a commercial property, it's quite different than residential because I know it's quite, quite, quite a bit more, um, inspections involved in different parties involved.
And, and the other thing on somebody like Heritage Village is what we do as a review is we force them to go through the farm marshal, which they should be going through.
They should went through that first.
Yes. So a lot of times if a permit's not pulled, they don't go through the farm marshal. So, uh, it's just one of those things that I think should always happen, especially when the public housing is involved.
Absolutely. Okay, and now, I know that we have Ms. Davis, right? Okay, how many, are y'all okay for me yielding the floor to her? Okay, Ms. Davis, you have the floor.
Okay, hi, Julie. I'm Dr. Sharika Davis. And, um, just, this is my first time to be in the city council meeting as an adult. I used to work at City Hall as a teenager. So, um, this is all, you know, new to me, but it's very interesting because, um, this particular agenda item I've had an issue with in the last two weeks. I own several properties within the city of Avenueville primarily, um, and also in Lafayette Parish, so I am familiar with the mini coat and I'm not oblivious to it. However, um, the most recent interaction was with a porch that we redid because the existing porch from a dilapidated property had to be redone. Every property that I've maintenance in, within the city, I hire people to do the work because naturally I'm not, you know, I'm, you know, I'm business. I don't do all the handyman stuff. So my electrical person, my plumber, they do their own permits. I've never done permits. I'm in City Hall at least once a month, taking care of business, so no one's ever told me that I needed to have a permit for twenty-five dollars to redo the porch. Had I known, then I would have done that. So I came tonight primarily to put a face to the name because I know, uh, Councilman Terry Bruce Art had spoke to you, uh, as well about me, and she's been very instrumental in helping me along the way. I did get my permit today, so I thank you all for assisting me in that endeavor so that we can resume our project. But when I came to City Hall with all the regulations that you have in place and even looking at the, uh, the East Street property where you all are saying that it's blighted, which there is some issues with it, but we all can see. It's totally contrary to what I'm trying to do within the city of Avenueville, taking properties like that and try to beautify it and make it livable for people. So I feel that I should not be treated, you know, less than a woman and an educated woman. When I come into the city hall and ask questions, if there's a rule that I didn't know about or I don't understand, then I should be able to get an answer without being, you know, targeted or talked to in a derogatory manner. So I came tonight just to, you know, put a face to the name and state my piece. Thank Councilman Bruce Art for really, you know, going above and beyond and helping me to continue on this project. And my goal is not, I hope, uh, Mr. Campbell, that, you know, if I have to be treated like this, that I would just stop doing business within the city, which I've lived in Avenueville all my life. And I'm not trying to stop doing business in the city, but I don't wanna come here and be treated less than a person.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I pay taxes, I don't cause any problems, and I try to do the best I can to make the city, you know, better. And every property that I own is above and beyond. We don't have to advertise for it because people are always waiting to move into our property. So I'm not the landlord that just, you know, painting and, you know, have trumpets going under the streets. We don't do any of that. Every property we've had, we've worked with primo two-tiered associates on several different, uh, occasions and just as recently as last week. But we don't try to break the rules. If we did something wrong, it was definitely not intent, it was accidental. So, you know, that's all I came to say tonight, and again, thank you so much for helping me too.
You're welcome.
Mayor.
First of all, I want to thank you for, um, the buildings, uh, dilapidated buildings that you've, um, purchased, especially in my district and also throughout Avenueville. And, uh, you've, uh, made them livable, uh, you've made them decent, and I've been inside, and I know that it's not just a ten-dollar paint job. Okay, so I want to thank you for that. And at any time you feel like you come to City Hall, because I believe in respect, and I always say that, anytime you come to City Hall and have a problem with any employee from any department, we don't tolerate that and always feel free to contact the mayor's office or contact me. That should not be tolerated. But thank you for your business. That's our, thank you for your business.
Mayor, I had a, uh, discussion with, uh, Mr. Fisher about the preference of materials that, uh, one uses when they're remodeling a home. And we discussed about how good pillars on, on that porch, and you said that was some law that said she couldn't use that kind of material. I mean, if it's a personal preference and the building is getting remodeled and it's starting to look real good, why does she have to change her preference for building materials on that, on that porch?
As we discussed earlier, it wasn't about the building materials used, it was the building method that was used.
And, and actually, I'm gonna caution y'all because this is not an item on the agenda. What the item on the agenda is right now is about penalties for people not pulling permits and doing work. So I don't wanna talk about a specific project right now. This is specifically about what do we wanna do about people doing work without permitting? Do we wanna change the process as far as what the penalty is? Can we be more effective to make contract? Yes, there's absolutely always going to be people who don't even realize they need to pull permits for work. I mean, that happens. I can tell you as a homeowner, before I was in government, there's some things I probably did to my house that I didn't know I needed a permit for. I'm like, you know, we all do it. There are absolutely always going to be people who make honest with things, right? That's one thing. But in some cases, there, there is intent, right? There is intent to get by and not get the, not get the permitting. And a lot of times that intent is tied to working without permitted contractors to do work that we require a licensed electrician and we require a licensed plumber for a reason, right? Because when that work is done without someone with a license, that can cause a public hazard. Because when that work is done without someone with a license, that can cause a public hazard. So, you know, I think there has to be, uh, it is good for Brian to bring up the fact that we need to look at the process and look at the penalty to make it more in line with what we're trying to accomplish as a goal, which is to stop shisty contractors from coming in to flip a house to make a deal fast money. And some innocent homeowner who probably used their life savings to buy it and getting a shut, a shisty deal because they think it was inspected versus someone who's truly trying to do work and, uh, and, and do work honestly in the community and helps with a non-blighted property. So I don't know if we have a resolution to what, I don't know that we're going to have a resolution tonight. I'm going to say, Brian, thank you for making the suggestion and council, if you have any more thoughts on the suggestion, I'd like to hear them. Um, and then we can, we can, we may not take action tonight. We may bring it back up for action, but what Brian's.
I made one more statement just to clarify to the council and to anybody in the audience or anybody watching live stream. So when I, when I've been sending these notices out, it's to stop or I also have face to face contact. There's, there's times when there's nobody at the residence and I'll leave a notice whether on the door or send it through the due process certified mail. Not that, but it always states to stop what you're doing and contact the tax and permits department. I'm not a licensed building code inspector, nor do I work in the tax and permits department. I work along with them and help them to identify people that haven't gone through the permitting process. But it's always redirect them to the tax and permits department because they're the subject matter experts along with Mr. Kim on building code inspection and the, the permitting process.
And listen, I have a, I have a friend who's a general contractor who does work all over, commercial and residential. And she called me and she's like, I need a permit to do a roof. Let me call tax a permit, but I'm pretty sure you need to, right? So I think that, I think that part of the problem is this has been happening for so long in the community and we've never had someone else checking, right? So people have just been doing work, some good work, some not so good work, and there's been no process of checks and balances. And so we're weeding through that and trying to figure out how to, how to be more productive and make sure that we are accomplishing what we hope to accomplish that, which is work done in a way that doesn't put the tenant or the rest of the community at, in danger. Right? And that's really the goal of it. It's not make money for the city. I know people, they want to charge you everything. No, just like we charge $25 for excavation and so that we know who's doing work. So if we have problems with that work, we know who to hold accountable. And it's just, uh, you know, we all, we all have a duty to make sure that the community, the work done in the community, especially in the housing and in buildings in the community is done safely and according to code. Councilman, is that meaning?
Yeah, Mayor, Brian, uh, before putting some new action on the non-compliance, we'll get our, our, we'll get Lynn to call the other communities, what do they do? So instead of cutting utilities off.
I actually like the idea of cutting.
Well, but every case is going to be, it's going to be different. So what's the crowd doing? What's the library is doing? What is Youngsville? You know, people are dealing with this in different ways. And I'd like Lynn to make some calls to see what's working for the places before we, you know, adopt the new policy.
There's definitely different methods because more robust municipalities have actual building code inspectors.
Well, and, and I think we've, we've alluded to this. I mean, not, we haven't gotten to this yet. Brian is, um, Brian is code enforcement, but one thing that as we work through the strategic planning and get to of probably maybe 2025, would be to adopt a minimum standards of living and have someone who goes in, especially on rental properties and, and has a checklist of minimum standards that's required in that housing, that would need to be met before we would turn utilities on. Um, and so that's something that's I've had conversations with other municipalities that some of the accomplishments I've gone to. And that's one thing that they've done. They do it when they come in for electrical permit, they have a minimum standard of living. And if that house is not met, does not meet those minimal, minimal standards, in other words, you can't rent a house with a hole in the floor or a hole in the roof with the raining inside. She has to be, those themes are minimum standards of quality of living that you have to meet before we'll put the electricity on to the house. We don't have that yet, but my goal would be to eventually get us to that point so that, because there are people who truly want to renovate houses and have good, stable homes for people that need. And then there's people who are just here to put as little money into it to get the most money out of that lot of money, right? So that's the ultimate goal. We're just not there yet, but we have faith that we'll get there eventually. And then that would be a whole different department than Brian.
And we already received calls like that. It's just because we don't go inside structures.
Yeah. Right now we don't go inside. We just, yeah, assess from outside.
And Mayor, let me address one thing. Uh, when they started charging for a permit, even though we didn't get involved as a city, it's not to make money, as you said, but it was to keep track of, let's say this debris of the road, doesn't haul off his own debris. Different things like that, that the city has seen over the years is one of the reasons, big reasons why they started just give me a $25 permit. You have the contractor's name, information and all that. That way you can actually call him or go after him so that he can come back and clean up his mess or you have a contact at least.
Yeah. He does work on property and calls all the junkins up in the ditch and calls all the neighbors' properties to flood because they have to clean this. You know, you have somebody to hold accountable.
If they don't fit in places, oh, then you're up there working.
Yeah. Okay. And Brian, you're going to continue to work on this and we feel we have a recommendation to bring forward to the council. We will do that. And if anybody has any other recommendations we'd like to hear, Brian will take them, right? Any other comments from the audience before we move on? Okay. That's number four. Number five, to grant a variance from the mobile home ordinance to allow Mr. Eugene Clark to move a 2025 14 by 56 mobile home to the mobile home park at 202 Windy South. The variance is needed because our ordinance does not allow any mobile homes smaller than 14 by 65. Mr. Clark, are you in the audience? Can you stand for a second? Okay. And this is in Windy South. Is that you, councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay, councilman, sorry. Okay. And it's your recommendation to grant the variance? Okay. So you have a, you have a rec, you have a motion by your councilwoman to grant the variance to move, allow your smaller mobile home into that address. In a second. Any questions or comments from Mr. Clark? Any questions or comments from us? You know, you need a permit to move it, right?
Yes, I think that's smart.
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
Is the guy that owns the mobile home park in favor of that?
Do we know? Did the, did the, I think you might have asked for it, right?
Mr. Paul Crow, right?
Yeah. He's the one contacted on.
I think he's the one that originally, so I think, well, I had two different people contact, but I think that the, the mobile home owner, porch owner called about this one to see if we could get the variance.
Yeah, he called this.
Sarah?
Sarah?
Tax and permit.
And then I called this Sarah.
Okay. We'll verify, but I'm pretty sure that is, I know that's correct.
I don't think he runs pretty tight. There's a walk over there, so if you do something that he wouldn't want done in his trailer.
Oh, we can qualify and say pending the approval of our property owner, but if he's already given permission.
Yeah. He called me every, every three days to see if I got it.
All right. So we have a motion. Second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Most, uh, variance granted. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, to grant a variance for mobile home ordinance for Eli, Elia F. Dror to move a 2006 mobile home to 127th, I'm sorry, 124th Southland Drive. The variance is needed due to the age of the mobile home, which 18 years and our ordinance says no more than 15 years. Ms. Dror, are you present?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Okay.
Remind me, Southland Drive is where?
Oh, excellent, French.
Okay, it's, it's over Rodeo Road also. That's what I thought. And the home is in, the home is in stable, I'm assuming the trailer's in stable condition. I didn't see a picture.
Oh, yes, I gave some pictures.
And it has the seal and the label issued by the U.S. Department of Urban Housing as required by the ordinance? Yeah, it has to be approved by, by, by certain mine speed is, is the problem.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. All right, this is your.
Yeah, Mayor, I did see the pictures and the pictures look really good for an older trailer.
Yep.
So I don't see a problem with it moving into.
And it's in a, it's in a mobile home park also where there's other mobile homes. Okay. So I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Chris.
I think once again, that's against the Paul Crow report.
Yes.
So.
It is. And again, he's texting me and we've been talking and we measured the spot and everything.
Okay.
So.
Again, need a permit. And he knows that.
And he knows.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. Okay. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour in the area of Harvest Lane and Harvest Port. Councilman Rachel Duchette, move on. She's so much less to be called councilman. I'm trying to make my point and say that.
So I'm thrilled in that area and I witnessed speeders down there. I mean, in borough, it is down the East State Street. So if you go in that subdivision and you see a lot of speeders with kids playing and the bus drivers are trying to drop kids off and you see these speeders, 35 is too high for that area. So I think in that way you could drop it down to 25 to be safer.
A motion and a second, Tea Party, would you like to weigh in?
No comment. That's fine.
That's a controlled neighborhood.
And if they're driving too fast, they, they, we need to slow it down and I can put a portion up there also.
And they can issue citations. Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Chris?
Yes.
You're going to sign it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll just replace the signs 35 with 25.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Do we have to notify anybody of that when we do that?
That's what I was going to say. We might want to wire that subdivision. Is it a subdivision?
Yeah, yeah.
Anytime, anytime we get a notice, we have to have it in the paper or notify that it's going to happen.
Okay, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah. We also issue warrants for the first couple of weeks.
Who, uh, who puts those in the paper? City Hall. So I just need a notification when it's, when it's clear, so I can change the sign. Cannot change until, until it runs through the paper. Mark, is that correct?
Yeah.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, to adopt the resolution also as the mayor to execute cooperative endeavor agreement with crime fighters Louisiana LLC. That's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion pertaining to the payment to be made from the city sales tax fund in 2025 so that Katie and a crime lab for the construction of their new facility. Board, you have the floor.
Council, this was, um, just the item that you already addressed where you agreed to pay your proportionate share to the crime lab. I just asked that it be back on the gym so we can be clear for the minutes of where the fund will be coming from. Based on our ordinance that created the sales tax and states what it can be used for, we're going to use the sales tax.
Good. I, I do motion for that clarification. We did previously approve that.
Yeah.
And just get into the minutes of meeting where we're, where we're taking the money from.
And that way, when, when we have a, later on, we have an audit, they'll see that the council approved that it comes from sales tax. We're all on the same page where it's being paid.
And you approved the dollar also, right?
Yeah. We did that already. It's just to say that it's going to be taken from sales tax fund in the next budget year. When you're putting the budget open, you know.
Sales tax and what it can be used for. My obvious opinion, it can be used for that because we address it. Public buildings, even though it's not in our jurisdiction, is for the benefit of the environment.
And the chief will confirm, um, we have significant number of cases that go to that facility. So I think it's going to be used well for the city of Abbeville.
Motion and second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, to adopt the resolution requesting financial assistance from the state of Louisiana in a fiscal year 2024, 2025, local government assistance program, LGAAP, and community water enrichment fund, SEWAP.
Second.
Motion and a second. Todd, you, you want to say anything to, about this?
It's an annual program. The state has allocations for municipalities and this is just a resolution putting a big word in.
We're usually anywhere between 15 and 25,000 depending.
It's actually going to be quite a bit more this year, the legislature appropriated more.
And then there are certain things you can and cannot use it on. Last year we said roads for the LGAAP because I think it was maybe 25,000. So we, we said roads because you have to name it now, but you don't get the money for another 18 months until no, what you, yeah, we're going to use it. I probably use that for some road patching, but, uh, yeah, not enough to do a road. And then SEWAP, we usually buy valves and meters and different things for the water plant because we always have to get to that.
Maybe that was good.
We cannot use the playground equipment, of course. I know that's our fact. They usually allow it. They don't allow that anymore. Okay. Uh, I think I have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, to rescind the motion from September 3rd, 2024, regular city council meeting, which authorized the city to become the sub-recipient for the funding from the resilient communities infrastructure program that was awarded to the Vermillion Parish Police Jury. I have a motion and a second, council, and I know just for the benefit of Rachel, uh, we made a motion and a second to be the responsible charge for a grant that was going to the police jury. It was to build a business incubator and a, or called innovation center. And we were going to take that under our umbrella. There is another organization within Abbeville who is already doing that work. And so we're removing ourselves from the equation so that they can petition to use it directly for that facility they're already working on. Um, and that, that organization has been Nehemiah.
Mr. Rodrick, Ms. Rachel, can y'all stand up? Do you recognize?
Be clear, we're not that, here we go. They're going to go and have a case in the police jury tomorrow and it'll both work the project that they're already working on.
I'm standing for the city. I hope you can carry that to the finish line.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All of this is, there is none. Departmental or for engineers. Who wants to go first, Todd? You have anything?
I don't have anything.
Kim?
Nothing.
Attorney board? Public works director, Chris? Chris?
I'll entertain questions if you have any. Good?
Thanks for the job, Mr. Campbell.
One thing left. Hang two signs and we'll be done.
Okay. Thank you. Clarkson, Rick? Byron?
Hey, nice to see y'all again.
You took off the bag.
It's been a while. Um, what I've been busy with the flag football season was finally complete. Actually started a little earlier this year. Last two years, we kind of ran into some weather conditions. So we beat the first cold front with rain and everything. So, uh, this year we had a lot of less kids being sick of being out there during those conditions. So, uh, I've learned for the future to move it up a little bit and get past the weather and everybody can have a healthier season. Um, baby basketball registration ends Thursday at midnight. Um, so 11:59 PM tomorrow night. Registration online will, uh, be complete. Um, games will begin in December. I'm trying to look at the, um, Christmas stroll to coordinate to make sure we don't have games and that all going at the same time. Um, other than that, Toys for Tots, uh, baseball tournament that we always host, uh, first weekend in December, December 7th and 8th. Currently we have 28 teams assigned to the Abbeville area. Um, 21 10 double A teams and seven 14-year-old teams. And it doesn't shut off until December 1st. So we may have some more teams come on through. And other than that, any questions since I've been missing?
Byron, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Okay. Mayor, um, welcome, Rachel. Welcome. Congratulations for making it through your first meeting on state. Um, I want to thank everybody who worked with us and also all who attended the omelet festival. I think it was a huge success. It was much hotter than I would have liked, but I can't control the weather. We did have quite a large crowd. Uh, I would say by my estimation, the largest one I've, I've seen since I've been participating, which has been a very long time. Uh, we had 13 guests. Uh, we had thirteen guests visit us from international colonies. So that was great. It was our forty-year anniversary. Also in the audience, just in the little bit of people that I talked to, I met three people from Paris, France. I met a young girl and her father who came from Holland. And, uh, I was told there were some people from Canada in the audience and I'm sure there were many others. So it's always great, uh, when we can have a nice event for our community, but it's even better when we can have it for our community and also attract outside in because they shop in our stores and they eat in our restaurants. And hopefully they put gas, uh, on their way out. I think it went off with relatively, I think there was one minor incident that the, the police department handled pretty quickly on Sunday.
With minors.
Yeah, and it was with some minors in the square. Uh, other than that, I know of no other incidents, but it was well done. I know Chris and our team worked really hard. Uh, fire department helped clean up, chief had police on, on, uh, lots of police on, on presence both day. So, um, job well done to the whole team. We had a representative from the lieutenant governor's office, Mr. Mike Walsworth, who came from West Monroe. And he was absolutely enchanted with our downtown and, uh, said he was going back and brag about us and he would be back. So I said, hopefully that gets us some money later. You know, y'all know I'm always asking for money. But anyway, we were very glad, glad to have him and welcome him back in the future. Uh, shifting gears, we're gonna be gearing up for Christmas. Uh, in, in my mind, the most magical time of year here in Abbeville, so I know it's a lot of work, but that's where we're going. Um, we had a meeting today about events and, um, getting them all on the calendar, making sure we have everything covered. I'll, I'll be bringing your report from that event committee, uh, in the near future, so you guys can all be aware of it. Um, also, I just wanted to say, please go vote if you haven't already. Polls, polls at eight P.M. tonight. Uh, today is election day, so if you haven't already, it's important that you vote. Every vote counts. I'm not telling you how to vote, I'm just telling you, go do it. Um, eyes on the Gulf. I don't know if you've been watching the news, but there is a potential storm. Um, they're saying maybe Thursday it might enter the Gulf and then, uh, you know, we're looking at, at anywhere from a, actually, I looked at Friday to Saturday, Sunday arrival is what I, I saw most recently this afternoon. Chris and I will be meeting about that promptly. I got a call already from some, some, uh, wildlife and fisheries people. They were looking to store some boats or staging and so I'll align them up with the airport. Uh, and so we, Chris and I will be working with the team. Um, I think our, our costs for the last storm for Francine was around forty-two thousand dollars in preparation costs. Um, it takes a lot to be prepared. We gotta keep our eyes on it and we're gonna work on it, make sure we're ready. Um, you know, luckily, thankfully, we were not hit by Francine, but that also means that all of those costs are absorbed in our budget. We don't get reimbursed for them. So Chris and I are gonna be working on how we're gonna react to this one. Uh, we have a, a good plan in place. It worked last time and we'll do it again if we have to, but we'll, we'll keep y'all posted on it. But everybody, keep your eyes on the Gulf. Uh, we'll know a lot more, I think, by Thursday or Friday. And, um, I think that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor. That's it for me, yeah. Chief of Police, Mike Cardy, Chief, you have that for?
Yes. I know the mayor has, um, coffee talks this week.
Oh, thank you, I was about to say.
On Thursday?
It's Thursday.
And, uh.
It will be at, um, it will be at, um, gosh.
Orleans.
Bourbon Street Deli. And it's going to be with the judges and the DA. So if you have questions about how the court system works, what's going on with the issues with crime in the city, we hope to be able to have a candid conversation. And Chief, you plan to be there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's Thursday at seven A.M.
We have a new, um, invitation to the public, to the mayor council. Uh, Ray Chevle has volunteered to host Chaplain de Chief at Ray Chevle Wednesday, November twentieth at eight-thirty in the morning. They will serve coffee and a, a little breakfast. So anyone interested in coming to talk to, uh, the chief, the sheriff, we're gonna invite all the law enforcement into Paris, have them there, anyone that can make it. And then anyone in the public that has any questions, for either of our, you know, any of our towns can ask questions. Um, I'm sure, you know, we'll have someone from the city here, from the law enforcement agencies throughout the parish, so y'all welcome to show up. Good, that's Wednesday? Wednesday?
The twentieth.
The twentieth, eight-thirty. They might want you to look at a couple of cars, but. But that is it. Uh, like the mayor said, uh, the omelette festival was very enjoyable. Met a few people from overseas and they were very excited just to see the way some things were done around here. They took a lot of pictures, but they had a blast. They really enjoyed themselves.
Uh, the Friday night of the tornado, the international guests wanted to get in the back of the cop car. They could be arrested and I was like.
They wanted to act like they were arrested. But hey, everybody had a good time and no, nobody had to get arrested, nobody had handcuffs, so. But, uh, but like the mayor said, Sunday was probably the largest omelette festival I ever saw. Uh, concourse was almost standing room only and there were still people throughout the, the other areas of the festivals. It was really nice. That's all I have.
I have a question. I'm sorry, I have a question for you. Where are we? Have you issued any, uh, citations on, um, our litter program?
Yes, ma'am, my guys have littered, uh, issued some. We have one that's coming up a lot on Eaton Drive. And, uh, I told them that we were not gonna go there again without issuing a citation. I believe they issued a few and also a leash law violation, same house, and it's supposedly new people there.
But the littering, you're talking about the littering citations from the, uh, grant to, it's not a grant. The one that, um, the one that they're working with, with the, with the dollar foundation.
Oh, yes, yes, and I'm still talking to, uh, Brooks. He's still sending me videos. Uh, the one that I can't talk about right now, but others that we are issuing citations. Uh, my lieutenant Chris is handling that. He takes the videos, he finds who the person is that's littering and we do issue the citations. Uh, like a couple of them are out of town, but we have some new ones, so they can issue those.
So the ones out of town, are you mailing them a citation?
We're asking them how to do this, because, uh, you have, if you're, you're not sure who the person is and the car's from out of town, you're gonna send it to the owner of the car.
Right.
We, it may be easier if we just get in touch with the person, let them know it's coming to them and we get something done, instead of just sending them a random ticket in the mail.
Because I have some heavy spots and I'm sure you know about that John Hardy being one of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Martin Luther King, um.
I got the one on Mott Avenue also. That one, we tried to do it, they're just having a hard time getting someone home. I don't have to catch them at night.
When I ride, I see that and I, I wanted to ask you, are we putting forth to?
Yes, ma'am.
I implement that, okay.
Talk to him, supervise. One question for the, uh, police chief. What's the progress being made on the speed bumps for Grayson and Bailey?
Well, those won't happen until the overlay, that's part of the.
Yeah, they, they wait till the blacktop, right? They're still doing the shoulders and the sidewalks and stuff.
Yeah, right now they do, they, then they just, Todd, you know more about the flow of how that project's gonna work, but.
Video of the existing pipes, we've got a few repairs to make in that area to come in to the sidewalks and after that, they'll.
And then after the roads are overlaid, it's part of the overlay of the roads where they're gonna put the speed bumps in. Chris has his hand up in the, am I right?
That's correct. Steven did call me about that today, Todd, and, and, uh, told me to get a meeting with Steven to be, to discuss the, uh, repairs that we might have.
Going to come. But you can issue some citations there, I promise you. Every time I'm there, they speak. Every day.
I need about six more Gonzalez's.
Yeah, I mean, because they speak through the neighborhoods. We issue them on one sixty-seven, but we not issuing speed tickets to neighborhoods where people are living and that's where we should be issuing.
And everybody listens back and worries.
Um. Anything else? Anything else for the chief? No, no. Okay. Uh, Fire Chief, Chief, do you, Mayor?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Council members for discussion, Councilman Campbell?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Bruce Sorensen?
Isn't it Halloween tomorrow?
Oh, thanks for reminding me. So, I'm sorry, I had very little sleep. You're gonna cover it? Oh, okay, okay. Councilman Bruce Sorensen will cover it, but I will say glance your eyes up on the, the screen here. Uh, go ahead, Councilman Bruce Sorensen.
Yes, uh, the Junior Auxiliary is gonna have, uh, don't waste those costumes you paid for, bring your children out. That'll be in Magdalen Square and the Junior Auxiliary is gonna do that. They're calling it the Jubilee.
So that is tomorrow night, right? November sixth is tomorrow. Five-thirty, it starts with a DJ. Um, the costume contest, registrations from five to five-thirty. Five-thirty judging, five-thirty, five forty-five, uh, judging of the boots and the costumes. Six to eight P.M., trick or treating. Seven-thirty will, they will announce the contest winner. So I know that I came out here for Halloween. It was a complete wash, but they did have a few people that, that showed up and, and handed out candy and they had some kids there. But for those that missed out on Halloween, we, JA will be hosting a post Halloween, Halloween tomorrow night in Magdalen Square. So we encourage parents to bring your kids. It will be in the square and don't think we're gonna be closing any streets off because they have a small enough group that they think they can keep it all contained in the square. But the chief will have some police officers out there just in case.